Good evening to everyone and welcome to the special Board of Trustees session that we set up two weeks ago in order to address the issue, the single issue on the agenda tonight of whether or not to move to a different athletic conference that we are presently in. As we start out all of our meetings, I would ask you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to start out by thanking everybody for showing up. I also want to thank everybody for the numerous comments that we have received, and we'll get into some of that in the discussion, I think, with the trustees. The order of this meeting tonight will go essentially as follows. We're going to first, we had some people sign up for public comment, which is our policy. You will be given two minutes to make a statement. What I would ask, though, is we have had comments, written comments, from, I think, over 150 people, and we had some public comments already. So what we're going to do tonight is limit the public comments to those who have not yet commented either at the last meeting or in written form between the last meeting and now. I have a list of those names, and I've compared it to the list of signups, and so I'll try and let everybody know before you're called up to the microphone that if I have a record that you've already commented, if my record is wrong, I want you to tell me so, because I don't want to deny anybody an opportunity to make a comment. Our purpose here with regard to the public comments is to receive as much information from the public as possible. It is important to all of the trustees that we can give the public an opportunity to do that. But I'm sure, as you can appreciate, at some point in time, the information does start to get somewhat redundant. And so I'm asking those who do make a comment to try and address what you think might be new issues that we have not heard before. There was a suggestion that we make a list of the comments, the pro and con comments, and the arguments contained in them, so that people could look at it and only address issues that haven't been addressed before, but I must tell you, the list would be so long, we wouldn't be able to get through it in 15 or 20 minutes. So I'm going to trust each of you who make public comments to try and keep your comments within the two-minute timeframe, and also try and address issues which you feel may not have been addressed in prior comments. After the public comments, then we'll entertain a motion from the board, and if we get a motion and a second, then we will have a board discussion on the motion. So, in order to proceed, let's start with the public comments. And Benaya Chevers, I see first, and Benaya, I don't know if you talked on this subject at the last board meeting or not.
Chairman Howard, I did mention that ASNC Student Government had taken a stance and passed a resolution the Tuesday prior to last board meeting, but my comments would be new, and the comment that I previously made was in my report and not during public comment.
Okay. Well, we're going to do it in this order, then. Benaya, and then Matt Rucci? Matt, where are you, Matt?
Right.
Good, thank you. And then Tony Norris? I had a Norris that signed up, but it wasn't a Tony. You haven't commented yet, have you, Tony? Thank you. Mike Chapman would be the next one. Kent Eggleston has signed up. And, I'm sorry, Matt, did you comment before? Have you written, sent a comment in?
I have written in, but I've not made a public comment.
Okay. Well, the written submission is considered a public comment. It goes in the public record, so since we've already heard from you, I'm sorry I missed that. I checked the wrong name here. So it would be Benaya, it would be then Tony Norris, Mike Chapman, and Don Saucer. We have received comments from Don, I think, and Martin Gould, and John Bounty? Am I pronouncing that right?
Yeah, you did.
Right.
You did, you see, by email, something like that.
We did, yes, thank you very much. And we have John Ray and Bruce Howard. All right, good. Some I have not been able to check yet. Devin Loy, have you made a comment yet?
No, I haven't.
All right, thank you. Kimberly Tanner, have you made a comment yet?
No, I haven't.
Thank you. And Carol Lindsay, is it?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
For point of clarification, tonight, we're here to hear the discussion be going from either staying in the SWAC or moving to the Nwac. I've had numerous calls, questions regarding, does this vote tonight going to mean that we're going to drop our sports program? Will you clarify that?
Yes. There is no discussion here that I know of that we're going to drop any sports program. Part of the discussion may be about what the consequences might be in terms of moving or not moving, but we are not planning on dropping the overall sports program at this college, and that topic has not been raised at all. Let me just finish the list here. Charlie Miller, have you made a comment yet?
Yes, I saw.
Actually, Mr. Chair, I do have a question while you're going down the list. If we're regarding faculty, or staff, or coaches, if they're in our packet, and we have responses from them, or they have contributed, is this becomes part of the public record?
Yes.
Do they speak again then, or are they?
No.
Okay.
Louis Watkins.
Yes, I spoke with him.
You did submit, thank you. And Blai Levitt?
No, I'm not supposed to.
You have not?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's begin with Benaya Chevers, and the next individual comment would be Tony Norris and then Mike Chapman, so if you could kind of come up to the front here, we can move through the comments one at a time. Benaya, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman Howard, the rest of the board, and thank you, everyone, for joining us here tonight for the special board meeting. I know I cannot speak on behalf of the entire student body, as I know there are differing opinions. I just want to emphasize a few reasons that I have noticed that the change would be good, so I am going to speak in favor of the conference change. The first reason I'd like to speak to is that there would be a hugely positive financial aspect to this. By changing from the Scenic West Athletic Conference to the Northwest Athletic Association of Community Colleges, our administration has projected savings of up to $650,000 per year, and I know that you probably already have all received that information, but as students, we do understand that financial impact. The second reason would be that changing conferences would allow us to sustain and maintain the current teams that we do have in our athletic department. I would not like to see any programs face the reality of having to be cut if we did not make this decision, and that would be a very real reality that we could face if we did not make that change. And the third reason is that the change could possibly allow for potential growth in the future. I don't know how long down the road, but it could potentially have that factor in, and also it may possibly foster a closer community, as it would be a more regional conference that we would be competing in. I understand that students have differing opinions, like I said, so I definitely cannot represent all students. This is just my perspective. One thing I'd like to note is that students pay a fee that largely pours into the athletic department's budget, so we are a pretty large stakeholder here, all students, every student, and I think students need to understand the issue the best that we can, and as ASNC Student Government, we've taken the time to really understand all of the implications that this change has, and that's really just what I'd like to emphasize as I speak to you right now. So I think that the wisest and best decision that we can make is to move forward with the conference change, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Benaya. Our next commenter is Tony Norris. Tony, thank you for coming.
Chairman, board members, thank you for having me. My name's Tony Norris. I am the president of Sting Soccer Club. We're a club of about 500 athletes, and I just want to let you know that Sting is in favor of opportunities for all sports in Northern Idaho and not just limiting any, whatever that means. That the opportunity to move to the Nwac, we see as opportunity where you can actually potentially add more sports, baseball, track and field, some things I may have cut in the past, and also allow you to be more financially responsible with some of the taxpayers' money when it comes to those choices. So I just wanted to put that record. Thank you.
Tony, thank you very much. Mike Chapman is next, and you will be followed by Devin Loy, and then Kimberly Tanner.
Thank you. My name is Mike Chapman, and I'm a former member of the NIC Foundation. I'm here to support the women's softball program. As many of you know, the game of softball has had a long legacy in our community, from the glory days of Park and Rec's low pitch, which I got to witness as a young bat boy for my dad's team, all the way up to the current fast pitch environment, which I am also fortunate to be a proud father and coach of my daughter's 14-year travel team and a coach at Coeur d'Alene High School. Our community's made a lot of progress in the fast pitch program over the last several years. Coeur d'Alene, Lake City, and Post Falls have all combined to win the last four 5A state championships, and I think we're going to get a fifth one this year out of one of those schools. And we have several local and travel ball teams and players that are competing on a national level, not just local, not just regional, but on a national level. We've made a lot of progress. Don Don Williams and her program is one of the foundations and cornerstones of why we've made that progress. They paved the way. They started a program from scratch and have put on, they put on annual camp every summer, which is the best in the area. Their former players get back to the community. I can go down a list of Shay Craig, Alicia Krier, Amanda Krier, Stephanie James, Amanda Foden, Lindsey Stark, Angie Boardman. These are just a few of the names that have provided, given back to the local girls in our community. I think it's a very strong program in our community, and I'd like you guys to do whatever you can to keep that a part of this program. So, thank you very much.
Mike, thank you very much for your comments. Our next presenter is Devin Loy. Devin, thank you very much for coming.
So, I'm a local kid, born and raised in Coeur d'Alene, went to Coeur d'Alene High School. Last year, I did play in an Nwac school, and I must say, coming from an Nwac school to the SWAC, huge change. I did not receive athletically or academically the help that I needed at an Nwac school, and when my family and I decided that we needed to switch and come back and play for NIC, the change was uncanny. It was just so much better. It helped me academically, it helped me athletically. It's going to help all these athletes get to where they want to be at the next level, and academically step them in the right direction to a better future. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next presenter is Kimberly Tanner, and you will be followed by Blai Levitt, and then John Ray.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Tanner. I am the Director of Administration for Idaho Thunder Soccer Postfall Soccer Club. I'm here as a representative for Idaho Thunder Soccer, as a mom, as a former NIC student, and as a taxpayer. I guess most of my comments come from the fact that as an NIC student, or former student, without having sports programs and those players that come in along with those sports programs, I don't believe that my education would have been what it was coming here. I came to NIC because it is known for its biological science programs, including nursing, pre-vet, pre-med programs. I was lucky enough to have former students that were also soccer players in some of my classes. They pushed me. They pushed me hard to be a better student and to be the best student I could be, to academically perform at a top level. I believe that if you guys choose not to go ahead and switch conferences, that you lost to lose these programs, and it is my understanding that without moving, that is the possibility. I would hate to see that happen. As a mother, it's been a great opportunity to have sports programs at NIC. It gives my children something to look forward to and to push for themselves. I guess that would be all I have to say. I really hope that you guys decide to go ahead and move conferences and give NIC the opportunity to continue to be the school that it is and have the educational programs and sports programs that they have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kimberly. Our next commenter is Bryce Levitt. Did I have that right, Bryce?
Yeah. Hi, my name is Bryce Levitt, and I'm a student athlete here at North Idaho College, graduating in the spring. No coaches asked me to come up here today and speak. I just felt compelled to share my unbiased opinion, because I feel that the side for staying in the current conference has not been well represented. I played basketball last year at Washington State University, where I decided to transfer at the end of the year. One of my coaches at WSU committed to helping me find the right community college for me, and his first option was North Idaho College. His reasons were that NIC played in the best junior college league in the nation, they could offer full scholarships, and that NIC was respected by four-year institutions everywhere. My assistant coach also specifically told me to not go to an Nwac school, because they don't offer full scholarships and are not well-respected by four-year institutions. I have an Nwac school in my hometown that I could have played for, and I didn't even consider it, because I would not have had the same opportunities as at a national junior college. I am now being recruited by Ivy League schools for basketball, such as Cornell and Columbia, because of the exposure I got from playing in the Scenic West Conference. So, an inevitable truth that needs to be realized is that going Nwac will not increase crowds or community support. On the contrary, it will drastically lower these crowds. We played in Nwac gyms during our non-conference schedule this year, including Columbia Basin, Treasure Valley, Blue Mountain, and Spokane Falls in a championship game. Each of these respective Nwac gyms was the same during the game. No band, no cheerleaders, no student section, no fans, no support. Another thing that makes zero sense to me in this scenario is the amount of budget, the amount of the budget cut being dumped on athletics. North Idaho College Athletics uses 3% to 5% of the total college budget, yet athletics is being asked to shoulder over 30% of the cut. Our administration has publicly stated multiple times that our NIC family will share equally in these budget cuts. I understand that it's not athletics' job to produce diversity for the college, but that diversity from athletics is indirectly built greater than any other tool. I have teammates from California, Texas, Delaware, and even Australia, and the best part about our current situation is that we have this international flavor while also mixing in local athletes. I grew up a couple hours away from here in eastern Washington. I have teammates from small towns in northern Idaho, and even three teammates from here in Coeur d'Alene, and I can fully speak for every single one of us on the team when I say we would not have came to North Idaho College had it been an Nwac school. I also wonder why the coaches were not informed that the budget problems were going to cause a conference switch. This would have given everyone more time to fundraise.
Excuse me, Bryce, I don't mean to interrupt you. Are you about done?
Yeah, I have one last thing to say.
All right, I'm sorry I interrupted you.
No problem. I would just like to say that if this had not been such a quick decision, it had been presented ahead of time, the coaches would have had time to give everyone, to get ideas, to fundraise, find ways to cut down on their team's costs, and explore alternative solutions. And the last thing I'll leave you, leave everyone with, is a quote. "You cannot be nationally recognized if you are only a regional program. We are fortunate to compete in the NJCAA, the largest intercollegiate athletic organization in the U.S." That is a quote from our very own athletic director, Al Williams, in a coaches showcase this last October. So I hope that we can make an educated decision that's best for the school. Thank you.
Can I ask a question of Bryce?
Bryce?
Question. Bryce, tell me about, you've moved to our community. Tell me about your interaction here in the community. Do you have a host family with your situation?
Yeah. The move to this community was probably one of the best things that could have happened to me. I was pretty lost at the end of last year, didn't know what I wanted to do with basketball and academics, and I came here, and I had some full-time coaches, Coach, you know, Coach Fay, Coach Simmons, Coach Jackson, that fully supported me, and I had a host family that took care of me, and it all helped me get, you know, in the right direction, and it's something that I would have gotten 0% of at a Nwac school.
Thank you very much, Bryce.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Our next presenter? Our next presenter is John Ray, and then Bruce Howard.
How's it going? My name's John Ray, a men's soccer student athlete. Not only am I a diehard basketball fan, go Cards, but I'm also a family member of the Coeur d'Alene community. In my two years at NIC, I've been given opportunities that not many of my friends back home have been given. As of right now, I'm a volunteer with the Human Rights Education Institute, where I have the opportunity to enhance the lives of my fellow community family members. I'm also employed by the Sting Soccer Club, where I get the chance to impact the lives of younger soccer players in the same way my life was impacted. One of my favorite pastimes besides playing soccer is performing spoken word, and just recently, I was given the opportunity to open for a world-renowned poet, Buddy Wakefield. These opportunities would not have been possible without my recruitment to NIC, which I'm extremely grateful for. I would hate to see these opportunities diminished for younger athletes that have so much potential to give back to their community. My name is John Ray, and I'm not just a student, I'm a student athlete. Thanks.
Thank you. John? Thank you very much for coming down. Or Bruce Howard?
You know, my name is Bruce Howard. I've been a taxpayer in the area since 1996, and I served on the school board with Mrs. Lippert for six years locally, so I understand the pressures you folks are under with regard to making a decision like this. However, I would refer you back to the mission statement of the institution, the North Idaho College, and that is for advocating diversity for the broadest range of student, of the student body that you can. And that, taken in mind with the financial pressures that you're under, I think suggests that the right move would be to move conferences, to allow all of the teams that are currently functioning to stay functioning, and you've heard testimony and probably seen written testimony about the effects of being an athlete on both the academic performance, as well as the athletic and teamwork component of the sport. If you start, if you're forced to stay in the existing conference, you will likely, from what I understand, be forced to cut teams, which will never come back. It's just a reality. Once they're gone, they're gone. So my plea to you is follow the mission of the institution and allow for the greatest diversity of teams and student growth that you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the public comment portion of our meeting, special meeting. I would like to take this opportunity to thank everybody, I think I did this at the beginning, but I want to do it again, because these questions are very, very important to the trustees that they hear from the public, and the public has responded with a lot of comments and a lot of submissions, and we do appreciate the time and effort that you put into looking into this proposal and giving us your feelings and your comments on it, and I want to thank all of you who have done that. With that, I'll open it up for any, what we need to move forward is a motion and a second. So I'll open it up for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would, we could make sure I understand this. If I make the motion, we'll open it up for discussion after the motion, okay?
Correct.
So I would like to propose a motion for us to approve the move from the SWAC to the Nwac in an effort to do what we think is right for the college.
All right. Do we have a second to that? Judy, are you there?
Yes, I'm there. Can you hear me all right?
Yep, you're loud and clear. I just wanted to make sure. Have you been able to hear everything so far?
Yes, thank you, and I heard Ron's motion, where you're looking for a second so that there can be discussion.
Yes.
And I'm listening for my colleagues to see what they're going to do.
Since you can't see them, everybody's sitting here looking at you.
(laughing) Thank you very much.
Is there a second to the motion to move from the SWAC to the Nwac? If there is, pardon?
Judy Meyer will second the motion so that we can have discussion.
Okay. All right. So that now opens the subject to discussion. Anybody have any comments? Ron?
As a father of a college basketball player, my son was blessed to be on Gonzaga's basketball team when they went to Elite Eight. I understand the value of sports to a school, and I would do anything I can to assure that we do not lose our athletic program here, our ability for our students, and the opportunity for the parents that want to continue to see their children or their students compete. For me, it was an emotional, because I think we had this discussion sometime last year, it was a very emotional thing for me, because I think that when you make any change, the perception is, is that you're trying to take something away. After hearing the testimony of our president to recharge with the responsibility of balancing the budget, to weigh in all of the things that need to be weighed, after listening to our financial advisor within the college and getting feedback from them on what the impact this would be, after listening to our athletic director, who spoke very strongly in support of this, and listening to the coaches that testified, and then as well as our ASNC representative here, I think that it's one of those things where we hate to do that, if somebody would raise their hand for, and we hear numbers from 350, 650, a million, all these numbers across the board, at the end of this thing, I think that at the end of the discussion, it's the right thing to do for this college, which is to be willing to sustain and support our athletes and our programs here, but do it at a different level, and I don't believe that the quality of our education will change because we changed the conference. I believe that our faculty here and our teachers are committed to the quality of education if we didn't have an athletic program. So for that, after long consideration, reading 150 emails, and spending about eight hours over the last three days talking to concerned parents and concerned citizens, that's the reason I voted the way I did, and it doesn't mean that I want to take anything away from this college. I hope that this, if that continues, if it passes, that we say it was a sad day when we moved down, but it was in the best interest for the strength and the future of this institution.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Kristi?
And my comment is no longer than Ron's. So I'm, but I brought some notes, so I can be more precise. This board has already identified that this is the monumental paradigm shift for the college, and therefore it needs careful consideration. I'm a strong believer in process, and I believe this process we are currently undertaking is severely flawed. We need to be able to sort out the emotion from this decision, from the budget implications, since it was presented to us strictly as a budget issue. I submit that we have not yet begun our budget process, therefore the board has no reliable information on actual dollars. The proper process for this decision should be in our overall budget setting process. The taxpayers elect this board of trustees. We take our role very seriously in representing the taxpayers and our college constituents. They're also taxpayers, so I value their input as well. This board has final authority over this budget, and I'd like to, a side note on that, we've heard a lot of different rumors, and we see these wonderful teams in the background, these young kids, thinking that we'll cut soccer, we'll cut softball. There's been no discussion of that, and the board will make those decisions. They won't be done without a board process. I took it upon myself in the past two weeks to ask for much current budget information as possible in order to arrive at a proper decision. No information was provided to the board at the last meeting, except for an overall guesstimate number of a budget deficit. I still have no reliable budget numbers, since we have not had any discussion or decisions on revenue projections versus deficits. We have not studied other areas of the budget in detail, such as our capital improvement fund, that will be at approximately $10 million by FY15 if no funds are expended from it. We have not looked at our fund balance, it is currently funded at 20% of the total college budget. Auditors recommend between 12 and 15%. We may be overfunded in that area, so we'd need to look at that. We've not looked at whether we will increase tuition or fees this year and what that revenue may be. We have not looked at tax implications for new property tax on the rolls. There's still very much to be studied. The number provided to the board of 2.3 million shortfall also needs to be studied very carefully. In the budget review I have done in the past two weeks, I've learned that 822,000 of the 2.3 money has already been cut from the FY14 budget, and that was done last October through December. Much of those dollars were areas that were severely overinflated and should have probably been cut anyway. As an example of that is 200,000 in overbudgeting for utilities cost. There's another 337,000 in cuts in adjunct faculty. Those dollars would also probably be considered permanent, since if we're dealing with an enrollment shortfall, we wouldn't bring back those adjunct faculty, so that wouldn't be part of the budget deficit. I'm getting to the end. Another important component in making this decision is our long-held tradition of accepting feedback from the public. NIC has been part of the SWAC since 1990. NIC has been part of the SWAC since 1963. We've had a number of championship teams. It should seem very reasonable to this board and to our administration that the public would expect a proper process with involved community and campus members that can provide feedback to the board. An 11-year-old study that was, I'm sure, done in due diligence at the time is not sufficient for us now. I wish to make very clear that I can support a conference change if the board comes to this decision through a proper process. I'm incredibly disappointed over what's occurred on this campus in the past few weeks. I've watched faculty, staff, and athletics pitted against each other over this issue. I work for a government entity very similar to this one. We have a mayor and a council and a city administrator, just like we have a board of trustees and a community college president. In my 25 years with the city, I've been involved in many budget discussions. I've represented employees negotiating wages. And never have any of our employees taken sides in a budget issue. The police association would never suggest that the fire department should get more cuts to their budget because maybe we had higher cuts in the past. The reason we would never do that is because it's a very poisonous, toxic environment. So I don't, it's been very bothersome for me to see that kind of environment here at NIC. We have such wonderful people here. If you've been around long enough, you should be able to figure out that budget cuts in one area don't automatically translate to budget increases in another. The issue of time constraints and decision-making has been reported to this board. There's been no verification presented that a delay of six months to a year would result in the offer to join Nwhac to be withdrawn. We would hope that they would understand this is a very serious decision with long-term implications, and they would give us the time needed to come to that decision. I've always been a strong proponent and supporter of NIC employees. I have tremendous respect for the work that they do. But I won't set aside my fiduciary role as a trustee and make a budget decision without all the budget information necessary for that decision. Mr. Chair, I also have a motion, and I-
I have to deal with the one-
Well, actually, I think I have the ability to make a motion after his motion and discussion.
If it's to amend his motion, you do.
Yes.
We have to defeat this motion before you can put another motion in.
But if his motion passes, I wouldn't get an opportunity.
That's correct.
So I would make a motion now in discussion.
If it's going to amend his motion, you can do that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Amend his motion?
Yes. So I would amend Mr. Nielsen's motion, that we put this topic back in the overall budget process where it belongs. We take the time to study it, come to the right conclusion with everybody involved, and then more people will feel really good about this decision wherever it goes. I'm not advocating over one conference over the other. I'm looking for the correct process.
Mr. Chair, I would second that motion.
Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair, was there a second to that motion?
Yes, Todd seconded it.
Amendment?
Todd seconded it.
Thank you. I have a question then.
Yes? Yes, Judy.
And that is, thank you, Kristi, for your thinking and your budget assessment here. That would be one of my questions is, maybe the administration can help us understand what the consequences are of delaying and for how long. I think the amendment didn't say that we would delay it. I didn't understand how long this amendment would delay the decision.
I could speak to that, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
My motion really, the intention, Judy, is this goes back in our budget process, which you know we begin our budgeting in April. We should have our first workshop. And we should have it completed before July, hopefully by June. And by then, we should have a clearer picture of revenue versus deficit.
Okay, thank you. That answers that part. Then, Mr. Chair, I need to be sure I understand the consequences of delaying our decision until essentially the next fiscal year, July 1st, beginning July 1st of 14.
Okay. We have President Dunlap here. He might be able to answer that. We also have our athletic director. President Dunlap, do you want to speak to that question and then-
I'll speak to a part of that question. And that is that a delay in the process means that Athletic Department will not be taking any percentage of a budget reduction. Right now, we are faced with a $2.3 million budget reduction. And I've made it very clear that across campus, all areas of campus will participate in that reduction. And if athletics does not participate in that by delaying the decision, then that means someone else on this campus must shoulder that burden. And even if additional resources through taxes or tuition are garnered, and we put that into athletics, the net effect is athletics is getting a raise and the rest of the campus will be taking a reduction. And so that's the financial impact of delaying the decision. And I would ask Al to talk to the impact of the scheduling in delaying the decision.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Judy.
Before our president, before Al speaks, what I understood you to say was the financial impact is that the athletic budget would not be reduced even though we have a budget deficit? And why couldn't we have the athletic budget reduced even when we stay in the same SWAC?
If, when I posed the question, and not the question, but that everybody would participate in the budget reductions, the response from the Athletic Department is there is no room to cut in our budget without eliminating some of the sports teams. And so that's where this notion came from, that if athletics does not participate in the cuts and we don't throw additional money at the athletics, then the athletic director's solution or only option is to reduce the number of sports teams that we have, thus reducing opportunities for students.
Mr. Chair.
Hang on, let's finish the question for Judy first. Al?
Well, what's been said is absolutely correct. The options that we have with the existing grant and aid money that have been budgeted for us for this year is approximately $200,000 less than what we need to support all of our teams that we currently have under the NJCA levels. In addition, because of the travel increases over the last five years, we haven't gotten a sufficient increase in our budget. We are currently maxed out on our operating budget to travel within our current conference. So when I say we had no fluff in our budget, we have no fluff in our budget. We were asked to provide an additional contribution to the budget cuts last year. We fund, or we commit funds for scheduling and for scholarships for our student athletes a year in advance. We're recruiting right now for next year. And basically, all of our programs have been on hold ever since we've had this discussion, not aware of what conference we were going to be in or whether we were going to be cutting sports. So we've basically had all of our coaches not offer any scholarships for the last three months. So we've been on hold. So to delay this further, we've had teams that have been on schedule holds that we're committed to play for next year. We don't know whether we commit to those. We have scholarships we can't offer. We have no other solution with the current budget we have but to cut sports. So to delay this further means that I don't know what to tell my teams.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, hang on. Judy, did that answer your question?
That's a start. I have more, but I hear Kristi. I'll wait for my turn.
She does, yes. Kristi?
Thank you, Judy. Well, first, I'd real quick, like, just like to remind Al that the board's been involved for this, for two weeks. And so your comment about being on hold for three months, we've been in the process for two weeks. And that goes back to my statements about process. And Dr. Dunlap's talked about the budget, and I listened to what he's saying, and I'm trying to sort out, on one end, it's, we're in a budget crisis, and then the other argument is athletic needs to take their share. But I've pointed out, and I can point out more, that we haven't even begun our budget process. And from what I understand, $822,000 is really not part of the 2.3. And then you've also identified another possible $800,000. So we're getting closer. And if we look at our revenue side and we look at our fund balance and we look at our capital improvement fund and our property tax on the rolls that we will get this year, we don't know. We might end up where we're okay. And I would hate to make that kind of a decision if we're okay. If we're not okay, we'll know that by going through a proper budget process, and we'll do this right. And that's the right thing to do. To make a budget decision outside of the total budget process is fundamentally wrong. And to me, we take away the true intent of what we do here as trustees. We are supposed to focus on the budget and not have this be an emotional issue. So I, again, I am back to process. It's not about which conference to go to.
Ron?
I agree with you, Kristi, that the process was not followed the way it should have been. You, I share with you that under the short timeframe that we had, which was a couple of days, and then we're trying to make a decision of this magnitude, that it was not sufficient time which forced us to hear. From that point, we have had a lot of time to get the information. And I go back to our trip to Seattle when we went to the associations of community colleges, and one of them was how to balance your budget during tough times. Talked about the forecast for some reduction in headcount for the schools and what you need to do prepared. And there was a very common thread that you saw in some of these that were facing tough times is they cut athletics completely out of their community colleges. And I think that, I don't think this, we know we're going to see a headcount reduction. We know we're going to have a budget shortfall. And if we find some money, it's still, we're prolonging or not preparing if this money that we think could come back at help. And so this, now's the time. We know that 11% last year less reduction. We know that 10% is a forecast. We started out last year at 10, I think it was an 8% or 9%, and we ended up at 11. So I think we need to get in front of this. I think that we're prepared to make that. So I would appeal that we go forward and make the tough decision now instead of prolonging this, because I think that the numbers and the information is not going to change.
Okay. Todd?
My turn. First, I want to express publicly my appreciation for Kristi. Most people don't think of us as having a common thread very often.
Boy, that's an oxymoron.
But Kristi and I have spent-
Mr. Chair, I can't hear Todd.
Oh, sorry, Judy. Usually, that's not my problem.
Okay, I want to hear you.
All right. Can you hear me now, Judy? We good? Can you guys hear me? Okay, here we go. Kristi and I have worked together for hours and hours and hours over the last several weeks, the last couple in particular. We've put lists of questions together. We've gathered information. If you notice, she and I both have three piles because we've been digging into this thing together and asking the hard questions and requesting the information and bouncing things off each other, trying to do a proper due diligence of this and assess where we're really at. And I have a checklist here that I call my due diligence checklist. And some of you may know I'm a numbers guy. And some of you may also know that although I appreciate, Ron, that your son played at Gonzaga, I competed at Division One level myself as an athlete. So I've been there, done that, traveled, understand that concept. Here's some of the things on my list, and these are the things that trouble me because I'm like Kristi. The process has been tremendously flawed. In fact, I told her I found it ironic that some of the people that are really in support of this, I sat at a summit with them on Wednesday, the 19th of February, for over an hour. And the entire reason that they were justifying part of their position was because they didn't like the process and that they had talked this over for the last several years, three, four years. You had students making requests. The groundwork had been laid for the request, but they could not go forward because they were still in discussions about it and still had reservations because of the process. Yet I see some of those still, some of those very same people as some of the people really trying to advance this agenda. I find the irony there amazing. But let me give you a few other thoughts, if I may, because, again, Kristi and I have been digging into this really, really hard over the last couple of weeks. And I just appreciate the devotion of her time and effort. I was really impressed. And I know Mark will say this one's maybe not such an important one, but I've received at least two emails on it and several phone calls. But I think Title IX is going to become a potential issue, depending on how we treat the different groups. And if we have wrestling at the national level and softball or whatever and others that don't have the same opportunities, there are some cases to be made for that. So I'm just going to say that I still think that Title IX could be something that could be something we're going to have to address. I think that we've not talked about the dormitory revenue bond and the effects on that. I've gotten input in how many rooms we have. And it was interesting, right now, 22.5, excuse me, 22.53% of the residents in the hall are athletes, 41 out of the 182. And we have space for 198. So we're already down a little ways. Well, we have an obligation, and I have all the information on that. And so I get concerned about that when there's the refunding on that bond and how that bond works. You know, are we able to maintain that bond if we stop giving room and board as part of our scholarships and our number of athletes diminishes further out of the dorm and suddenly we have 20, 30, 40 empty beds in that dorm? So that's just a fiscal consideration, you know? And when I asked that question, the truth of it was, they couldn't help me on that. I said, "There are 18 suites and 26 bedrooms that have athletes living in them. If we can no longer give scholarships that include room and board, how many athletes are projected to leave the hall? What is the financial implications of this projection?" Unknown. There is no way to predict how many athletes will reside in the dorm based on only a conference change. Okay, so, and then it says, "For some athletes, the booster club, booster club, excuse me, pays a portion of the room and board, but it varies depending on the sport." Again, as Kristi alluded to, we have incomplete information here. We're talking about numbers that we can't verify and we can't validate. There's a lot of I-thinks, maybes, speculation. But we're not in our budget process. We haven't seen what the tax rolls look like. Some of you may know I just built a new house. Hopefully, we're moving in at the end of the month. I just added another house to the tax roll in the county. So, again, we don't know what those revenues are going to look like. A few more things, if you'll bear with me. You know, we haven't really heard from our community. We didn't give them a chance, you know? And I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, but I'm going to throw Mayor Widmire's name out there because we've received emails from him. And I know behind the scenes, he's talking to folks. We didn't give the city and the community a proper opportunity to wade into this in advance. You know, you have businessmen that have room nights when these people come in and rent hotels. What's the impact from the chamber perspective? You know, are the boosters out there, could they raise some funds? Are there other people want to step forward? Again, that's a compliment to Mayor Widmire. He already said, "I'll bring, I got my check out." He even threw numbers in the email, says, "I'll start paying this right now with a four-year commitment." So there's people out there, but I question if we really got out there and let people have some time to stew on this. Those that were in support of this change have been full-throated and have had all the resources at this college to speak their mind and get it all out there and advocate their position. Whereas I believe the students and the coaches were silenced, and it's just now at the 11th hour that some of the coaches are finally coming out. I have emails from some of the coaches. Some of the coaches that played are coached in the Nwhac, so they have the experience of both conferences. And I think they can speak accurately to the differences. They lived it. They coached it. They played it. They have the relationships, and they're playing in these schools. You know what, listening to the gentleman that said, "Hey, I've played in all these gyms, and here's what we go on," and the girls' basketball. They played the champ of the Nwhac this year and whacked them twice. We're a cut above. You know, we have accounts with money available, and we haven't really looked at where that all needs to be allocated yet. There are a few other things. I'll go real quick. You know, the Athletic Review Committee, my understanding is that was eight months to a year to put that together in 2003 to try to make a decision. We're two weeks. Have we, again, have we looked at the other, you know, the options? And why are we driving this wedge? And Kristi talked about that, between the faculty and the staff and the coaches and the athletes. I commended Randy Boswell for his courage to send a couple emails. He was one of the lone voices that would come from the quote "athletic" side because I think they were fearful they're either programs are going to get cut or they're going to get fired. And those that were going to get cut now are, again, not trying to say they're being disingenuous, but it's better to be in Nwhac than to be cut. So suddenly, if you're threatened to be in cut, suddenly, we're all in charge of Nwhac. That's one way to secure endorsements from people. Hey, if my soccer program's going away or my softball's program's going away, then I really want to go to Nwhac. Kind of leading the witness on that. Another thing that we haven't considered, there was a first reading this morning of some legislation down in Boise. I have personally spoke with Senator Nonini this week on the phone, and I've also been privy to emails. There are some things afoot that would follow on some of the legislation that Senator Getty introduced a number of years ago. That was regarding K through 12. This would be for the three junior colleges that would free up some money for us from the URD. The preliminary numbers I heard, based on some of the information they've gotten back, and these aren't, don't know how accurate these are, but these are just the preliminary numbers, still gathering all that. But for the three colleges in total, that could be more than $3 million, $3 million plus. And for us, it could be $900,000 plus. Now, there's support down there for that. Sounds very, very positive. So, you know, I don't know where it's going, but I know it's been read. I know it's being printed. I know it was on the, addressed this morning on the Senate floor. So, you know, hey, another $900,000, if that's the number? Well, that changed the paradigm significantly. We have a lot out there that we just don't really know about yet, and we don't even know the implications. And as Kristi indicated, as trustee Wood, just because you cut here doesn't mean it's suddenly available here. There's a lot of downstream- There's a lot of downstream implications. And so I think we're being a bit myopic or shortsighted if we rush to a decision right now. And, you know, we have, we have a very special niche here. We have a lot of NWAAC schools available, but there's very few at this level, regionally. And we give a spot for these kids as a jumping point to the Division One. If you look at the success of wrestling, men's and women's basketball, the numbers are staggering. I've got them here. When you look at the conferences, I, I can show you the, the teams that would be in our eastern group in basketball, and I've got them right here. And I can show you, two of the Oregon schools don't even have an Oregon kid on the roster. I've, I've got the, I've got the, the rosters here. You know, we say we're going to get a lot of local athletes. I like to see more local athletes, but I have to tell you, it doesn't guarantee it. You know, we, we've seen some of these things, and, and I think there's some misinformation, and maybe some disinformation. You know, I look at our roster here, and the only school that has as many kids from the local area or more is Spokane Community College. Treasure Valley Community College, none from their state, that's Oregon. Moses Lake has two from the local area, otherwise, some Idaho, Pualip, Vancouver, California, Nevada. You know, Tri-Cities has four, otherwise, they're all over. Spokane was good numbers. Yakima has none from Yakima on their roster. In fact, a couple from Nevada, California, a few from Washington, Tappanish, Kent, Honolulu, Hawaii. Wenatchee has one from Wenatchee, one from East Wenatchee, and then they're spread out all over. Walla Walla, two, they're spread out everywhere. Blue Mountain has zero from Oregon on their roster. We had a lot, we had an All-American, Derek Booth, from Post Falls this year in wrestling. The other boys from, one of them was from American Falls, Vijay Julio, two Idaho boys. We've done better with that. I'd like to see even more local. The GIA is soft money that we've suddenly made hard. You know, the 2000 work study, Al, I'm going to tell you, I don't think it's feasible. I watched my son start in August this year, because you know my son's at a four-year institution wrestling out in Nebraska. He started in workouts in August, and they just finished with the national tournament in March. How would he do a work study beyond everything else he's doing? It's impossible. Some of these kids, it's just not viable. We talked about that 2000. And it's not a federal work study, that has to come out of our pocket somewhere. So if we do that, we've got to find the money for it. Wrestling had 60 to 70 kids in the room, 15 were on scholarships, because we only get eight full scholarships at the NJCAA level for wrestling. That means there were 50 kids paying for their room and board, or tuition and books, or everything, out of pocket. They were on no scholarship whatsoever for wrestling. They stayed in that room all year. Pat, Pat and Carrie, Carrie, shout out to you, I know you're here. Great job, you keep that many kids in the room, and you can only put 10 kids on the mat at any time.
Todd, could we stay on the topic here?
I'm sorry, but that's impressive. That's a great program when you keep that many kids in the room, because wrestling's a tough sport. You don't just lollygag around. Every program we run here just about is a deficit. Our CTE, PTE, we're running at over $1 million a year that we're subsidizing. You know, we got Head Start, we got Area on the Aging, we've got, we have so many things that we do that we spend money, because we emphasize that word "community" and "community college." To just say that there may be a deficit in the sports is the reason to change leagues or to cut, I think is a mistake. We have a lot of things that aren't carrying their weight, and that's okay. Maybe we have to think of that in the 10,000-foot view, in the overall budget, and that's up to us trustees to have to look at that and prioritize. So those are just some things I wanted to throw out there to think about. I think there's a lot more to this picture. I think we have a puzzle with 1,000 pieces, and we've only assembled about nine of them. And I think that, I have to agree with Kristy, that I think we're premature in trying to make a decision right now.
Judy, you've been listening to this. You said you had some more questions, and I couldn't see you raise your hand, so.
That's okay. I wanted to raise my hand, because I had, want to be sure I understood Todd's key points. Could he give me the four nuggets that he was thinking about? Just because I was trying to keep track, but I can't see him-
Right.
-of all his ideas.
Well, so, Todd-
Maybe Todd, can Todd come back and give me a quick summary of those-
Yes, ma'am.
-few or four points that were the major ones?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I had a lot, I had too much time to think about it, maybe.
No, she asked you for quick nug, quick nuggets, no.
Quick nuggets. I think the process has been-
And go slowly, so I can hear you all the way, so, or thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Judy, here we go. I think the process was flawed and unnecessarily expedited, and I think we're premature to make a decision. Second, I do not think we have a proper accounting of our revenues and expenses, and I think we need to fold this into the whole budget process, as Kristy recommended, so we can see all of our numbers. I think we have a lot of information that's not been gathered yet regarding our revenues, and what our final expenses are going to look like. Third, I think there are initiatives that could be done, that we've not given ample time to explore, and I think we've not given proper voice to those that would like to see us stay in the SWAC, and give them the opportunity to have a cohesive rationale and argument for doing so. We've gotten a few emotional things, but we've had people that were, that have had a lot of time and energy to be able to say to switch, but those that are opposed, I don't think have had the opportunity. And the, and the fourth thing is, there are things, like what may be happening down in the Senate with, with Senator Nonini, and, and there are Title IX considerations, so there are some legal things, and, and, and state things that could also impact our decision. You know, the dormitory revenue bonds, another one of those. So those are the types of things that we have to think bigger about, of what type of, what that's going to look like, and if we're making decisions that, that we shouldn't be doing this at this time.
Thank you, Todd. Judy, did you have any questions? Or do you have any comments?
Thank you. Well, thank you, thanks for the thinking. As I think this through and listen to the ideas, I'm trying to figure out a way with the parameters we have of, well, understand the timeline to make the decision, really impacts the recruiting for next year. And we don't really have all the budget numbers that we all would like to have. Is there any role here for the booster club or other friends to help supplement the budget this year, so that we can tie ourselves over and do some more studying between, so we, and don't have to make the decision right tonight?
Mr. Chair, may I answer that? Judy, I think that, I don't know what the booster budget is, but I think as we go through our budget process, we will identify funds. I've already named a few sources that we need to look at, and I don't think that we need to make this decision tonight. I think we should put it back where it belongs. And I think that, again, I'm very disappointed that the individual groups have been kind of pitted against each other, and the idea is that we just want the faculty and staff to deal with all these cuts and not athletics. I think there's a proper way to do this, and that we all work together, and that we're not separating out different entities of the budget.
And Judy, I, in answering your question, and maybe Al, he's standing at the podium there, I don't know if you can hear him or not, but he might be able to answer your question also.
Good, please.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank all the board members for taking the time to go through this whole budget process. I really do appreciate that. And you brought up a lot of great facts that the community has not heard, and they needed to hear these things. As far as me, I'm also a financial person. I have been dealing with these numbers for the past three, four years. Our immediate need deals with travel to get to our locations. You know, we have an immediate hard dollar shortfall within our current budget that doesn't allow us to meet our obligations and our current conference without overruns in our budget. Through no fault of our own, we've had additions to our conference with new member schools, travel costs have gone up substantially since 2008, and our budget has not. So we've been fighting these budget numbers for the last three or four years. And with the options that we are currently provided, without any additional funds coming our way, we cannot retain all of our teams without getting additional money from the school to handle our current budget for travel. So if we were told, we're going to put this on hold for three or four months, we're going to have to make a cut, because we can't operate within our current budget. So there's no, we can operate within our current budget, keep the nine teams that we have, and say we're going to operate like we did last year.
Mr. Chair, I need Al to repeat that, because I wasn't clear what I needed to say.
Yeah, I said-
If we delay the decision three or four months, what does that do?
If we delay the decision as far as what we would do for our programs, and my budget doesn't change, I can't make obligations for next year. I can't make obligations to get there as far as travel for my teams without having an increase to my budget. And I can't, with the current budget we have for our grand aid, offer the scholarships that we had for last year. And with the change from the fee structure to 12 per credits per semester is full-time, what we need for our athletes is, on average, 16 per semester full-time. We are $200,000 short in my grand aid budget. And so if I'm at a minimum $200,000 short, just based upon this internal change from fee-per-credit hour basis from what it was in 2012, the exact number of scholarships I offered in 2012 will cost me $200,000 more in 2014, simply because of how we've altered our, our fee-per-credit basis for tuition and fees. So for me to have, to sit there and wait with my decision to say, with the current budget I have, to go out and keep my current teams, I can't do that. Without saying we're either going to offer partial scholarships, or we're going to have to cut programs. You know, the options that I have in front of me are not flattering. That's why I bought the most financial, stable situation, as far as an option, to maintain all of our teams, operate within the current budget that we have, not only for our travel within our conference, if we went to the NWAAC, but also for our grand aid budget I cooperate with within that. So I was throwing these options out, and again, I could sit here and argue on both sides as to why we should be staying in the NWAAC, or why we should be staying in the NJCAA. I've been on both sides, experienced that, know what the numbers are, know what the competition is, and know what our athletes want, need, and respect on this campus. But I also know that we're in an enviable position to have an option to go to a different league. Most of the colleges, the situation with budget cuts we're faced with, don't have that option to go to a conference realignment. They're told to cut sports. Given the choice, and it's a difficult one, to say, would I rather have cut of sports, which will happen if we stay in the league or go to the NWAAC? That was my decision, that I bought to present dental lab, saying I'd much rather keep the opportunity to have more sports for more student athletes. Title IX issue was brought up by Todd. If you're cut opportunity for female sports and provide them more for men's sports, you are, again, defying your Title IX obligation. So I have looked at all these aspects and understandings of why we're making this decision. So for me, this has not been a flippant decision. And again, it's a difficult decision to make, but again, given me as a choice as the administrator of this department, my decision was to say, I'd much rather keep outdoor sports and operate within the budget we have and change conferences, as opposed to saying, I'm going to keep four at a national level and cut five outdoor sports. Which basically, with the budget that I currently have, and the way that travel is going up, and the way that the national competition is required for our regional and national travel, this is what my budget would allow. So that's why this was presented this way. And again, to sit there and belabor this point and go on three or four months, Todd, come back to the same decision, all we've done is delayed the inevitable, which means I'd be cutting sports.
Hang on. Judy, were you able to hear all that, then?
I think so, because I'm trying to frame the summation being, from Al's description, that if we stay with SWAC right now, it's going to cost us a lot of money that we're still trying to figure out. If we don't make the decision tonight, we can't stay with, with SWAC, and your counsel, Al, is to go to NWAAC.
With, with my current-
Is that right?
With my current budget, the way it is, I can't field nine teams in the NJCAA. If my budget is modified, increased, or, well, it's got to be, it's got to be additional funds added to it for grand aid, as well as for our travel, that's the only way I can maintain nine sports. If they tell me I'm operating with my current budget, and I have to make a decision, then I can't operate, so I would have to be cutting some sports. It would be at a minimum two, and probably closer to five.
Mr. Chair.
As, as we go through this, Ken, is, is, boy, with, with continuing budget constraints that we, we, our choices are, we either find ways to increase our revenue, which would be to increase our headcount for the students, and we know that that trend is not going up, so that's not an option. We can't do anything about that. We could also increase our student tuition. We did this last year, and I don't think that that's something that we should be using as our first line of offense. The other one is, we increase our property taxes, and that's always for a public identity, identity, whatever, a public organization, that that's always the last resort. But you've got to understand, as these taxpayers in this community have garnered from a tax base on them at $7 million, to today, we're at $14 million in the last seven or eight years. So I think that the taxpayers here have supported this community. I think the taxpayers will continue to support this in the athletic program. But I think that if we don't go to them and look at what the other option is, is reduce our costs, or we reduce programs, I think this is the alternative to reducing programs and save all of our sports programs by reducing them to another conference versus cutting them completely. So I think we're back in that same circle we've been in before, which is, I'm with Al. We postponed this for three months. I think we're going to be at the same place again. And if we find that we have an accounting difference of $50,000 here, $100,000, $200,000 here, in the whole scheme of things, we're squeezing, squeezing, and there's other things that need to be due. And, and I think that Al understands as good as anybody, and he's, I always say, Al is the face of athletics for North Idaho. And if he stands there as strong as he does, looking at the budget, understanding his budgets, and says, "This is the right thing to do, to participate, be in a part of this community college, and to help balance this budget, and prepare some financial stability for this college," I'm back to where it was, where I think that postponing is just going to just come to the same, three months, emotional roller coaster, and we're going to be back at the same spot, so.
Kristy?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Well, Rod and I, we had such a streak where we were on the same page.
Two in a row isn't a streak.
That's okay, because my focus is not on what's the appropriate conference to be in, it's the, it's, once again, the process. And so I guess what I would respond to you, Mr. Nielsen, is, well, a couple of things. Al has repeatedly said, first of all, I want to say Al has worked very hard on this, it's been very stressful for Al, I recognize that. It's very stressful for me, too, Al. And I know that you firmly believe that you, these are your only options. But I'd like to remind you, and certainly the board, that the board decides what the budget cuts will be. The board decides. The board decides whether it's campus-wide or whether it's not. And so the threat that you've been living under, that this is my only option, that has yet to be discussed by the board. I'd also like to remind the board that we have so much budget information to go through, that we don't know if it's necessary to do this yet. And could we get here three months from now and say, yes, this was necessary? Maybe. But it'd be the right process, and it would be the most responsible thing to do when we have all the numbers. There's a few funds that I've brought up that nobody ever wants to talk about, and I, I want to talk about them, but it's part of the budget process. You know, the Capital Improvement Fund that we set up directly, that is our old forgone tax revenue stream of $2.5 million a year, we put that in a line item several years ago, a different board, and said, "We want this to be for facilities now, because the state's just having difficulty giving us money for facilities." However, in any other normal circumstance, that would be general operating funds. And there's nothing to preclude us from looking at that revenue stream, and if we have to take $400,000 out of it this year to keep our campus whole, operating costs, then that could be a decision we'd make at that time. But we won't be able to do that without the conversation in the proper budget format. And so for me, once again, we're separating things out without all the numbers, and it's completely improper. And it's been difficult for you, Al, and, and I, I really appreciate everything you've tried to do.
Todd?
I'm going to pile on a little bit here, but I'm going to reinforce what Kristy just
said because she's right. We've, we've been presented with some either-or scenarios that aren't valid. You know, even the Booster Club. Well, you got to vote in favor of this because if you don't, we're going to cut three sports. Well, yeah, yeah, we'll vote for it because we don't want to cut three sports. Again, as Kristi said, we as the Board of Trustees control the budget. We will determine how the budget will come out. We have to approve the budget. So I don't think anybody on the board has threatened you that we're going to cut your programs yet, or that we're not going to find money, or we're not going to figure out how to run the programs that we've endorsed or that we're approving. So until such time, we need to change the narrative a little bit. And the second thing is, as Kristi has alluded to, again, there are a number of pots of money out there, and there are a couple potential ones. One very large one right now that, again, is getting printed and was read this morning down at the Senate. So I think, again, we're premature to be saying, these are our numbers and these are our hard, hard choices, either or, right now. And again, the board will make that final decision.
Judy, did you have any other comments that you're, you want to make?
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. Lots of good thinking going on here, and, uh, I'm proud to be part of such a hard-thinking group, even though I'm not there, I'm, I'm thinking with you. One of the thoughts I wanted to try out or get some ideas, feedback from you all was, uh, years ago, when we had, uh, five years ago or so, when we had 3,000, uh, students, and now we have about 5,000 students, even though the enrollment has, has dropped. During that time, we were able to stay in SWAC, right? And since now we have more students, why aren't we able to have them funds to stay in SWAC during these times?
Well, lots, a lot's changed since we had that five-year ago discussion. First of all, as you know, with the, with the gas change, the cost of travel has more or less doubled for the buses and for the airlines. In addition, we've had, um, um, members in our conference that have expanded. You know, as you know, our league now goes down as far as Southern Nevada, added Western Nevada, um, and other schools have added sports. And our soccer league has been disbanded because they were in the N WAC at that time, and now they're in the NJCAA, and we don't have a true conference, so we have to play regional teams that are Wyoming and Colorado to make up our schedule. So a lot has changed as far as our obligations. But again, our biggest piece that has impacted us besides travel has been the tuition increase for us and our grant aid with the not being increased as the structure changed for tuition has been our biggest deficit that we've had to try to overcome.
Ken, can I ask a question, sir?
Hang on. Judy, did that answer your question?
Yes, that helps me, thank you. I heard someone else wanting to ask a question.
Yes. Todd.
Al, are we, I mean, maybe we can even say we are, maybe we can say we're not, I'm not sure. But do we really believe in our heart that at some point in the future, we went to the N WAC and said, hey, we'd really like you to take our orphan sports like soccer because of what you just described? We don't not really have a league, and then we end up in Wyoming for the regional, if we're 500, I believe, is the record we have to have, and we play all the different division schools and club teams and all the rest of that. To me, it would seem that N WAC would still like to expand and take some of our teams if we were willing to go there. I guess, do we really believe in our heart that we could never take some of our sports and go to N WAC if they made more sense for that affiliation and keep some of our sports on a national level?
Well, that was the first proposal that was brought to the N WAC. When I first went over there to meet with them earlier this year, I asked, can we bring over some of our sports? And they said, no. And the reason was that there are some schools in the N WAC that also have interest and participate at a national level. But they don't want to have us set a precedent coming in with having partial membership in one league and the other because that would allow other member schools to ask for that same request, and they'd have no recourse to not allow them to do that.
Then how do they fully justify the other three wrestling programs? Because there's, because there's three besides us that we-
I'm not, I'm not defending their position.
No, no, I'm just saying, but they have three wrestling programs.
Let him finish, please.
But again, this is-
If he could go a little bit more slowly, I could hear better.
Okay.
This was, this was the argument that was presented in 2003 when I met with the N WAC and said, could we keep soccer in the N WAC? And they made us, um, well, they provided us with an ultimatum. It was either or, you either bring over all your sports, or we won't allow you to maintain or retain soccer in the N WAC. And that's the reason why soccer, which had been in the N WAC from 1997 to 2004, was required to leave the N WAC. And I used that same argument, saying, grant us the same favor that you did, that we did for your wrestling programs in the NJCAA, but that still fell upon deaf ears. And so we went back there with the whole intention to offer our soccer teams because it really would help them in their schedule to have more teams competing locally as opposed to going to playing, um, schools in Wyoming or Colorado or playing more university club teams. It would have helped to have our soccer team as well as our golf team be in the N WAC. But they didn't allow us that option. And they said, as a compromise, we would bring over your outdoor sports first, but within a three-year timeframe, you'd have to have all your teams brought over to the N WAC to be in compliance. Otherwise, we would again be forced to leave or probably never be asked to come back again if we violated that agreement because that, in their mind, was what was supposed to have happened in 1997. And I know there was disputes on how that was arranged in 97, but they thought when we brought soccer over in 97, that we were going to bring over all of our programs after that. That was never the intent, but that was their thought on that process. And so to come back to them now and say, can we bring over a part of our teams, that would not be accepted.
A follow-on question, because you talked about the eligibility, because some of the difference in the scholarships and how they're applied and the percentages. If we are recruiting athletes, and we do have a transition period, but you could end up with a situation where you have second-year athletes, for example, that not only would not be able to compete at the NJCAA level, but there may be a point where if we have even one athlete on a particular team that doesn't fall within their criteria, that that whole team would be prevented from participating in, uh, postseason play, correct?
That is correct. And just to further confirm what you're talking about, um, the N WAC is aware there would be a transition period because if we were to move over our outdoor sports in the fall, we would have some freshmen on the rosters we want to have back next year. And to honor our commitment to them, we could still keep them at a higher-level scholarship. But as long as we had people that are higher-level scholarship than what the N WAC allows, we would not be eligible for postseason. And again, that's just part of the compromise, which is not unusual when you change leagues. But again, that's also a decision that we would make, and I think our coaches can make that decision, where they would want to, um, reduce their level of scholarship they offer for their freshmen coming back to compete in postseason or to honor their original commitment when they recruited these student athletes, to give them a full scholarship for two years, and then their goal, forego postseason play for the outdoor sports.
Those are some tough conversations potentially.
Yeah. All of this conversation has been tough.
Judy, um, any other questions?
Uh, thank you. What I, here is the conundrum that Al is in with how else can he fund staying in SWAC because the consequences are so great, and that's why he's advocating N WAC? And when the community input over the last month, and that's the most we've, less than that, has been there are more funds available, again, from the Booster Fund and from the community. And has Al had any experience with, uh, these various groups, particularly a Booster Group, being able to come up with enough money to help bridge the gap to buy us another year's time to think about this?
Well, you know, if it was a very small number, I had all the confidence that the Booster Club could try to rally around this, but I don't know how many programs operate their budget on pledges, and that's difficult to actually do. And our shortfall for our tuition and fees is a substantial piece that'd be the hardest. And like I mentioned earlier, that's a $200,000 shortfall. And our actual travel deficit for our operating expenses, um, with our regional and national travel, and a lot of that comes out of the president's contingency budget, that's an actual 125, $150,000 expense that we, we share this year. I mean, there is a price for being successful, and all of our teams qualify for region and national travel. And if he's looking for ways to cut budgets, obviously, he'd be looking within his own budget. And if he has to cut contingency, that would impact what we have as a, as a program. And so to ask our Booster Club to come forth with over $300,000 is unthinkable.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, and thank you, Al. That, that was why I was needing for some clarification. And I'm certainly not advocating a long-term commitment by anybody because I don't think we should budget that way. As Kristi's highlighted, we need to understand our budget's parameters, review it all, and figure out what's realistic to ask everybody to adjust in various ways. What I'm looking for was just that interim bridge loan sort of thing. Uh, what you're saying is that's such a big number that it's not realistic to find the support from within the community, even though many have offered to say, yes, we'll do something. It's probably not realistic to count on that even for a one-year bridge loan, never a long-term commitment.
Well, as you know, it's tough to fundraise in this community as it is, and then to be committed that, I mean, once you commit to your letters of intent, you're obligated to provide full tuition and fees for these wonderful student athletes that come here. And to say, in the middle of the spring, we don't have enough money, you don't really have that option anymore, which again, would make that be a burden back on the college. And, um, again, I'd be the first one to say, given the choice, I'd love to be in the NJCAA because I know and understand the competitiveness and opportunities it provides for our student athletes, but I'm also faced with the budget that's put in front of me and being fiscally responsible. I have to do what I know is best as far as operating within that budget and being realistic long-term, not just looking at it would be a one-year fix, where it would be five years from now. Again, I've been fighting the travel increases for the last five years, and we've eaten into the budget that was established during this ad hoc study 10 years ago so we wouldn't have to travel on, on vans. They put money in our budget so that we could actually travel on buses so we have safety for our student athletes. Because of the travel increases now, we are now eating into that, so we're back to traveling on vans again. And as the travel's going up for our, um, airfares, we're now bussing to the point where our softball team goes on the road for two weeks, not by choice because they can't afford to come back home. And so these are decisions that we're facing now, so when you say we have to further cut into our budget, we don't have that fluff anymore. And this isn't a matter of trying to squirrel away money. We have already eaten into our supply budget to supplement our travel budget because through no fault of our own, travel is going up through the roof in the last five years, and our budgets have not matched that. When you talk about a 69% increase in the athletic department budget, most of that is coming through personnel increases because we've participated somewhat with the, um, raises for staff, and we've added a couple of positions. But as far as our travel budget, it has not been any way reasonably impacted within the last five years.
Kristi, you had a question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Judy, a part of your question was what, what has been done to look for community resources? And I don't think within two weeks, there's been any opportunity to do much. But I would tell you, I think Al's done a wonderful job with his budget, with dealing with the numbers he has and what he's been told is coming his way, which, there's been no final decision on that. I'll keep reminding people of that. I think the board hasn't done their part on the overall budget, and that's what I keep coming back to. How can we say we're going to make a monumental decision when we don't have all the numbers? We don't know if this is something, when you talk about athletic program that's 5% of a $44 million budget, we don't know yet where we're going to be. And it's too big of a decision, too big of an impact on a community and a college to not do it right. It isn't about what conference one of us favors over the other, it's let's do it right.
And Kristi, uh, Mr. Chair-
Yes.
Kristi, thank you. Uh, and Joe, if one of us, uh, that certainly has caused me lots of, of thinking and discussion with, with all of you and the community in hearing what's, what's going on. What I'm trying to think through now in this situation, in the timeline we have, uh, which I don't think, I think it's been clear the board is not content to do things in this tight a manner in a short of timeline with as little information as, as we have. But weighing that with the consequences of delaying a decision and what that does to our program and to our students and to our budget, uh, is what I'm trying to, to weigh as, as I think it through. Because this isn't the only financial decision we have ahead of us, and as you point out, Kristi, it shouldn't be done in isolation because we've all made a commitment as a board to say, we must keep going on the technical program, CTE, and building there. Uh, and so I grinned, although you couldn't see it, when you talked about getting into our capital fund where I've been saying, don't touch that, we needed to build building. And yet, I understand this is, budget ripples just go everywhere, and it's a real dilemma for me to, to deal with it tonight, uh, so that we can hopefully better get a better sense of, of what those numbers will mean with allowing more time to find more numbers to try and figure out, uh, more sources of revenue. I'm, I'm just thinking with you all on, on how to measure that decision tonight versus postponing it and those consequences that go with it.
I want to take the opportunity to make a comment. Normally, I wait for the board to conclude all of its discussion before I make a comment, but, um, we have two motions in front of us. One is to delay this, um, proposal until the budget approval process, and then the main motion is to approve the move to, uh, from SWAC to N WAC. Um, I guess, you know, this, it is truly with a heavy heart and deep regret that we have to address this issue at all. Nobody, nobody disagrees with that. We really don't want to be making this decision. But there are times that we have to make decisions, and they have to be made, I think, in a timely way in which we can, we can, um, make the best of bad situations. And when we make this decision, we have been talking largely about the athletic programs here and the impact on the athletic programs, and certainly that's the focal point of a lot of these discussions. But there is the larger question about, how's this going to impact the college as a whole? How is this going to impact the other programs? Because if we don't, if we don't make this change and we find that we're in a position where we have to make budget cuts, those budget cuts are going to fall heavily on the rest of the, the rest of the college. And our commitment through our, through our mission statement and through everything else is to try and, uh, provide the best education that we can for all of our students and to do the best for our community. So the alternatives, uh, that we're faced with at this point in time are, uh, we could, um, we could make them move, uh, and hopefully that will help solve some of the budget problems. The rest of the budget problems are going to have to be taken up by the rest of the college, uh, community. We could raise taxes. We could raise tuition. The raising of taxes is something that, quite frankly, if we did that, we should raise taxes not just for the athletic program, but for the rest of the college community. Why should we just raise taxes in order to benefit one of the programs here? And the community's going to be asking us those questions. They're going to be saying, why would you raise taxes in order to benefit just one program when your main mission is education and academics and, and, um, PTE and CTE? We could, as suggested, maybe raid funds that we have tried very hard to, um, hold back for capital improvements, uh, for the CTE and PTE programs that we've always said are our primary capital improvement. And as soon as we do that, if we go to the public next fall or next spring for a bonding, a bond for those programs, and they said, wait a minute, you took the money out of that program in order to save athletics? Is, is the CTE and PT really your first, um, first priority? And so when we look at this question, it is a difficult question because it's focused on athletics, but we really have to maintain the wider perspective, I think, of how is it impacting our college community, our college, our, our relationship with our, our greater community? There have been comments about, well, there might be money, uh, there was some bill introduced in Boise. That, that proposal has been introduced for the last two years, and it's been defeated. Um, to, to hold back on decisions that we have to make now on budgets on the basis of something that's already been defeated twice, I, I think is, is not really, um, something that, that lends a lot of, a lot of weight to the argument that we should delay. There have been comments about the campus being pitted against one another. I quite frankly don't see that. This is a heartfelt discussion, a heartfelt difference, a lot of arguments and a lot of discussion and a lot of good discussion about the value of athletics, the value of our, our greater community. This is not pitting us against one another. This is having an open discussion about what is best for the, the, the larger college community and to our larger community. Um, I don't think we ought to look at this as something where we are, we are pitted against one another. I find that the, um, there is a lot of emotion, yes. Clearly, there has been. It's been stirred up. It would be stirred up anytime we talked about this, anytime we talked about this. It's, it's not because it's being talked about now, and it's something we have to deal with. And as trustees, we're going to have to break through the emotion, and quite frankly, we've had a lot of assistance from members of the public. You know, when we asked for public comment, uh, we received about 140 emails. 120 are for the move and 18 are against. So we have heard from the public, and we have had an opportunity to have a wider and a broader discussion. There have been newspaper articles. We have had two meetings on it now. To delay this, all right, puts us in a position of making it very difficult for not just our college to move forward and plan for next year, but for the other colleges that we're, we're in association with, whether it's, uh, SWAC or whether it's N WAC. They got to set up schedules, they got to do recruiting, and that's all, that's all being undertaken now. Delay is not the friend of resolving this problem. Delay is, 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 is the, is the friend of confusion. I think it's time to move forward and to make this decision. It is an appropriate time to do it. We've had a lot of information. You can always ask for more information. I'm one of these people that has always said, um, first and with the most information wins. But I could tell you, the corollary to that is, you've got to know when to stop gaining information and make a decision. And we're at that point.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes. Kristi.
Thank you. Well, we certainly see the process differently. I will give you that. No one's had any discussion about would we raise taxes because we're not in a budget process. No one's had any discussion about rating a fund, any serious discussion, because we're not in the budget process. And, um, I would remind you of how process was incredibly important to you personally on your first year on the board, when we were in a tight situation because of delaying the budget, that we had to make a decision on tuition and fees outside of the normal budget process, and you were very- And you were very, very upset about that. And you felt that we were making a decision in a vacuum. Well, that's how I feel now. I feel like we don't have all the numbers, we're making a very important decision. And it isn't a matter of having the courage to make a decision, it's making sure you have all the information and you've looked at all the ramifications before you go forward. And I do feel we haven't done this right. There's apparently some maybe legal ramifications with Title IX, we don't know. We don't know where, what our enrollment will be. We don't know what funds we can find on campus. And so to me, this doesn't feel like a budget decision. This feels like something totally different. So I've been very, very upset about that. I would like it to be a budget decision and I'd like it to be in the budget process.
So if, if there are any more comments, let me know. If not, it's time to vote on, first, the amendment.
Right. It's not thought through.
Pardon?
Hello?
Judy's just, just listening and thinking and I think the words used about heartfelt are, are appropriate here. Certainly for me, the dilemma of the process is not, as I would like to see it done, by having more of the budget discussion, more the big picture scale of what we're doing. The dilemma of delaying it complicating things makes it really hard for me. So I'm still thinking some more. I hope others have any other comments that I should be hearing as we go forward.
Ron.
This educational institution is a new thing for me, so I, I try to simplify it because I go back to the world I come from. If I'm looking for somebody to advise me what is best to do when I can't gather all the information, there's lots of emotion associated with it, I go to the CEO and look for his counsel and what need to do. I go to the CFO and look to see what she says we should do. And I go to the COO who runs that and say what to do. When you get a consensus at that level, it isn't new information for Joe, what we're dealing with, it's not new information for Alan, it's not new information for Sarah. They've been looking at these numbers and looking at what this is gonna be. So for me, it's, it's that, yeah, we can talk about, we can gather some more information. But I go to the three leaders of making this decision that come here and give advice to us and we challenge that advice, we ask for more information, we get public input and we've done that. I probably got, like everybody in this table, I probably got 20 hours in this since then in discussion. And a lot of this is the same thing on the pro and a lot of us, the same thing on the against, but at the end of it, it comes to the same thing. This is the right thing to do to secure our financial position. So I, I'm done.
If there's no other comments, then I'm gonna call for a vote. And we first vote on the amendment. And the amendment was to delay a decision on this until the budget approval. Let me just start down with Ron.
So you're-
Yeah, this is the, we're voting on the amendment, which is, and the amendment says that we will delay this decision until the budget approval.
Mr. Chair, can you have Kristi stop trying to influence my vote here?
Actually, I don't think I can, yeah.
I didn't hear what you said, Kristi, but I think you said, vote nay, so I'm gonna vote nay, so.
All right, Judy?
Nay.
Kristi?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
I vote nay, so we're not gonna delay it. That motion is defeated, or that amendment. Now we move on to the main motion. And the main motion is to approve the move to SWAC, from SWAC to NWAAC. Ron?
Aye.
Judy?
Aye.
Nay.
Todd?
Well, after looking up the definition and sharing it with Kristi the other day, today, I'm gonna abstain because I don't believe we have all the information to make this decision. And here's the justification for abstaining from voting. So I'm gonna abstain because I don't think we've been given all the information to properly make this decision.
Well, if you abstain, then the motion passes, but I'm gonna vote in, in favor of the move.
I kinda knew that, so it's okay.
Well, I, I don't think I needed to, but I think that the, the public's entitled to know how all of us voted on this and, and I will, I will vote in favor of the move. So the motion carries and we will, we have agreed to move from the SWAC to the NWAAC and we leave it to the administration and you, Al, to, to undertake doing that in the best possible way. And with that, the, the hearing is completed and adjourned and thank you all for appearing, for coming.